This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for September 8th, 2020 in accordance with the social distancing requirements Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. This meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide... One of these... yeah, my mic is on. It was working a minute ago. One of these days we'll start a meeting without... You know, when we get good at it, we won't have to do it anymore. All right, technical difficulties toward us again.
I can hear you.
We can hear you.
I can be heard?
I can hear you.
I don't know what the problem is then. We're getting a lot of feedback from, looks like AV. I don't know if that's audio. I can hear a little feedback here too. We've mentioned it's getting worse. Ready then?
Yeah, I agree with Jeff. It seems to be coming from whoever's logged in as AV.
AV logged out and it's still making the noise. Looks like it might be caller two.
Okay, can the people on the phone hear us?
Yes.
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 Can the people online at home hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah. There it stopped. Oh, no.
All right, so we're gonna just have to deal with a little feedback. Is that it? All right, would you like me to start over? And take two. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for September 8th, 2020 in accordance with social distancing requirements Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 70 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. This meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. A reminder, this meeting is being recorded this evening. We have a roll call, please. Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Berry? Alderman Bevere?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Chrisell?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Jim Lee, we will say the pledge here in City Hall. I invite you to say it along silently at home. The pledge reads, "To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, before we get into the business of the meeting this evening, we have a presentation by NewMed on the proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary. We have two folks to make that presentation tonight, Jim and Laura. Please go to the microphone and introduce yourselves and tell us your story.
Okay, good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Jim Hughes with Next Generation Development. We're co-presenters with New Era. Laura Jamello is here tonight to answer a lot more intelligent questions than I need to be asked.
All right, New Era is the new name for NewMed, is that correct?
Correct, and Laura can explain and walk that through you how that came to be. We are working on the northwest corner of Route 59 and Ferry Road. We've been under an LOI. We've been working diligently with staff and with a number of experts that we've provided materials for. The property itself is about a 5,000-square-foot building, which we will keep, for the most part, intact exterior-wise, except for there's been some mentions about changing the color of the roof, so I think that's something we'll have to look into. We are also going to take down the drive-through component of the building to allow for and add additional parking, which we will exceed the requirements as set forth by Warrenville. We've worked very hard on this, very long on this, and we think it's a great location for the cannabis dispensary that we're proposing here. I'm going to turn it over to Laura quickly, because she can answer many more questions than I can. Anything you have, thank you so much.
Sorry, I have to choose my glasses or the mask here. I can't do both. Good evening, my name is Laura Harmio. Thank you, everyone, for seeing us today. I will try to keep this brief. It has been instructed that it should be around five minutes, so I might skip around a little bit. But first, I wanted to give you a brief introduction of our company. We have been active in the cannabis industry in Illinois since the very beginning of the pilot medical program. In 2016, we opened our doors for the first time. We have three operating dispensaries currently in the states. We've been around for a while. We figured out the regulations and the operations, and we think that makes us really well-prepared to have a pretty painless rollout here as we prepare to open our doors in Warrenville. We have, as part of those dispensaries, dispensary licenses that we already have for the medical program originally, now they're adult-use dispensaries as well. We are eligible to have three additional dispensaries, one of them being in the Chicago Naperville Elgin District, as they divide the districts, and so that would be a license that we would hope to use in this space. Dispensary operations are highly regulated by the state, very security-focused, and I hope that we are able to address any questions that you have around our use. We have had a number of questions. Oh, I'm so sorry. I've been reusing this. This is a little bit of view overview. Sorry for getting used to the technology here. So, yeah, and we did recently change our name. We were originally NewMed, now we're New Era. There has been no change of ownership or anything else in our company, but we wanted to update our name to reflect this change that we have made from a medically-focused company to one that is now serving the wider public, although our purpose was, continues to be, to give the best service possible to medical patients, of course. I have some quick overviews here of the site, as Jim has described the location. This is a former bank building. It's been vacant for a number of years. It has 29 parking spots. We think has great access and appropriate parking for the level of visitors we expect to be seeing. We also will be doing some improvements, landscaping, of course, within accordance with all the rules and regulations of the city. I want to address some of the questions that came up in previous meetings that we've had. In particular, concerns that people had were around two main areas that had to do with traffic and customer flow, and concerns that had to do with security. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about traffic. So, one of the things that we did as part of this proposal is we actually commissioned a traffic study. And, you know, they were able to measure the traffic of the area. They used data that we have from our own operations and the number of people and patients and customers that we see day-to-day to analyze whether the parking was appropriate for the proposed use and the size of the space, the number of entrances, et cetera. They found that not only does the number of parking spots that we have meet the requirements of the code, they're also appropriate to accommodate demand. One of the things that is a difference between this kind of use compared to something like a restaurant, for example, that you would see there, is we don't have very strict peaks of users. We have a steady flow of users throughout the day. We won't be open during the morning peak hour. And, in fact, it creates very similar traffic demand as the previous use of that space. And, as you'll see in the presentation, specific conclusions, but generally, there were some additional traffic management measures that were recommended and that we've been in discussions with the city to make sure that we implement to avoid any potential issues, especially in the first few days where we think there might be added interest. It'll be a novelty. It'll be the first time that there's a place there. We might have a few more people visiting. So, we will take a number of measures to make sure that doesn't create a traffic problem for the area. The most important one is something that we've actually implemented already in our dispensaries right now as a response to the COVID-19 crisis, which is our ROP program, which I will explain in a little bit more detail later, but essentially allows people to preorder anything they're going to purchase. Simply come in at a specific time, pay for their order, get their prepackaged order, and walk out. So, there should be no lines. There should be no accumulation of people there. In times of really expected high traffic, for example, the first few days of operation, 4:20, which tends to be a time of high traffic in the area, we will provide alternative parking for our employees, or we will provide them with ride shares, so we will free up additional parking spaces in the area, and we will always think of creating incentives to encourage off-peak visits for our customers. This is just a quick explanation of our ROP program. It is very similar to what you might have experienced at a restaurant where you just go online. There's an easy-to-use menu, has all the information someone may need in order to make an order. You go in, you put everything in your basket. We get the end. Most importantly, you get a pickup window that you have to select. And so, you can say, "I will come by between 11:30 and 12:00." It's a 30-minute pickup window. And what's great about the system is it allows us to limit the number of visits in each pickup window. So, we can visit. We can say, "We will only take 30 customers every half an hour." And once that pickup window has been filled, those pickup windows will no longer be available to customers that are looking to place an order online. So, we can actually very carefully regulate the number of people that come in every half an hour, so we should never be having more people come into the shop than are able to park there at a time. We have agreed with the city that especially as we launch, we're going to be using this exclusively. We won't have walk-in customers at first until the system has been in place for a while, and we can come back to the city to review it. I also wanted to review really quickly our security operations. We have extensive security. I believe we submitted a over-50-page security plan to the city. This is both out of our own commitment to security, but also this is a highly regulated industry with a lot of input from the state and the state police. We have a single point of access, a single point of egress. We have redundant checking of ID that anyone that comes in, and extensive cameras inside and outside of the dispensary. We have alarm systems and motion control systems, and we have a camera system that is able to be accessed directly by the police at any time. We keep the recordings. If anything goes missing, they can check it. And there additionally is something called a seat-to-sale system that actually tracks each individual piece of cannabis from the cultivation center all the way to which dispensary and what time that sale was made. So, there's extensive tracking of all the product. I can answer specific questions, but again, I want to keep this as short as possible. And, yeah, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. I would just remark that at the Plan Commission, when you made your presentation, it was extremely detailed, and all of the Plan Commission members, thank you for that. So, this is kind of an executive summary of something that was very detailed that's available to folks if they want to see it.
That's correct. And as I said, I'm happy to answer questions. I was told several times I should keep it much shorter, and I tried, and in some way, I hope I didn't rush it too much. But, you know, when you know too much about something, it's hard to keep it short. But, yes, the thing I really want to highlight is, we really have been doing this for several years now. We have all seen lots of news in North Aurora and in different places about the crowds. Those crowds are, for the most part, something that was related to an issue of supply, which I think we're going to start seeing changing massively as more and more dispensaries are going to be opening their doors, and there are going to be more choices for people. Additionally, I think it was a novelty. The first few days, people just wanted to be there. They felt it was history. They needed to do that for the first time. We're not seeing anywhere, but especially not in our dispensaries, that sort of line issue anymore. We have a lot more systems in place for line management to make sure that, as I mentioned earlier, that we can limit exactly how many people come in every half an hour, so we're never exceeding capacity at any site.
Great, thank you. I'll give the council an opportunity at this point to ask questions or make comments. We'll go through our normal procedure for that, beginning with Alderman Ashower. Alderman Ashower, anything to add or ask?
Nothing to add. No questions.
Okay, Alderman Berry?
I do have one question. So, on your ROP program, this is for pickup only. There is no way that people can actually place an order and have it delivered. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's actually not allowed by the state at this point. I believe there is a law proposal that has not made it past the legislature at this time, so no delivery. There is a temporary allowance for curbside pickup for medical patients only as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. We are doing that in our downstate locations. You know, when a medical patient comes by, we can bring out their order to their car. We don't know if that's going to be extended to either all customers, or if it will be extended once the COVID-19 crisis has been, hopefully, very soon has been solved.
Okay, any follow-up, Alderman Berry?
Yes, one other question. I'm sorry. So, this is recreational. You will also sell to patients who have prescription medical, correct, at this location?
That's correct. Medical patients will not be subject to the online preorder only, as is the case now in our other dispensaries. They'll be able to do walk-ins. Normally, we also like to reserve an hour in the day that is for medical patients only, so they can have added privacy if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bevere?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just had a couple of comments and a question, maybe either for you or for Chief Toronto. First of all, I need to say that in the very beginning, I was one of the people that was not in favor, one of the Aldermen that was not in favor of this. So, I have followed this process as closely as I could, considering the COVID situation and everything. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for your presentation tonight. I've read all the background that's in the packet and different things, so I know there's a whole lot more going on, and I was very impressed. You folks obviously have been in this business a while. You have a lot of experience. You faced some of the questions, the difficulties, challenges, and so I was very impressed with the company and just how you presented. The second thing I just wanted to comment on was our Plan Commission. And I read all the notes and different things, and at the public hearing, there were a lot of good questions, a lot of legitimate concerns that people had. I thought that that process was handled very well by the Plan Commission. I thought they had great questions, had great comments. They had, I thought, very astute requirements for you guys, and they didn't hold back in any way. They demanded a view, what they would demand of anybody else, which is probably why we have such an amazing Plan Commission. So, I needed to say that for the general population, that they need to be pretty proud of our staff and the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, because I think they did a stellar job with this. And my last, actually, question, it can be for you, but it might be for the chief. And it has to do with getting in and out of your business, but it's also the same thing for any business at that location. So, this is no issue that you bring to the table. It's already there. And this has always been such a frustrating place to get in and out of. And so, as I was reading, is it Appendix C here, and on page two, there's three ways that this consultant talked about getting in and out of that area. Now, things have changed because of Duke Parkway, which my frustration was all pre-Duke Parkway. And so, I guess if you can't make these left turns safely onto 59 and onto Ferry, there's always this Duke Parkway. My question is, is it legal to make these U-turns? Because as I used to come out of that shopping mall and go west on Ferry, I would make sort of a U-turn over the median strip, but I always thought I was sort of not doing the right thing. And so, it seems from this Appendix C or whatever, that that is a legal thing to do. And the other suggestion in here, number C, is to just go ahead and make a right turn onto 59, and then try to get over three lanes and do another U-turn at that corner of Ferry and 59. So, my question to either, maybe the chief, or maybe you, is all of this legal? If a police officer saw somebody trying to get over three lines of traffic, I know it says you should be careful, and if you can't do it safely, don't do it, but are these U-turns actually legal with the ordinances and the state ordinances that we have?
Laura, I'll begin with you, or Jim, or do you want to go to the chief?
First of all, I believe, and I will defer to the chief, there is no prohibition to go out onto 59 and to make a U-turn to come back north. If there is a sign prohibiting it, then it is illegal. There is no sign there. Again, it is going over one, two, three lanes to get there, so nobody's suggesting that at peak traffic, you try and do that. Secondly, I don't know about the Ferry Road U-turn. Our thoughts were always, if somebody needs to go north, they go west on Ferry, over to Duke, take that, wind around, hit the stoplight, and go north at that point. But again, I will defer to the chief, but there is no signage at 59 and Ferry about the U-turn. I question whether it's a smart move, but again, that depends on traffic at the time.
Chief Toronto, anything to add?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that you're not allowed to make a U-turn in any intersection in the state of Illinois. So, that would be whether it's a controlled-access intersection that has a stoplight signage or an uncontrolled intersection. You may make a U-turn at any other location that does not have a sign prohibiting it, as long as you would not violate a curbed median. And what I mean by that is that if you would have to drive over a, you know, and Phil, you can maybe provide a little bit more insight. I'm gonna say a three- or four-inch curb to make a U-turn, but what we would define as a rumble strip, and that's where you have a rippled portion of concrete that would serve as a median, that would still be legal, but you're not allowed to jump a curb, so to speak, to make a U-turn. Does that answer your question, Alderman?
Yes, I think so. That certainly answers the question about going west on Ferry and then making that turn over that rumble strip median to get back onto Ferry going the other way. Now, just let me clarify the issue of going right out onto 59 in front of the dispensary, and then if safe, get over the three lanes. So, you're sitting at the intersection of 59 and Ferry, and then to make a U-turn in front of, probably, there's a median there. As long as you can clear the median and not be in the intersection, you're okay?
You know, yeah. I mean, anything that you have to do with changing lanes, you have to negotiate with the safety consideration, being that you cannot do it in a manner that would be unsafe. So, you couldn't cut another car off or slow down to the point where you would impede traffic so that you could make a lane change. I would think that most people that were going to be going north on Ferry, or excuse me, north on 59 from Ferry, would probably proceed to Duke Parkway and then negotiate coming back around to the dispensary. And another thing, I think that most people would probably geographically plot their journey a little differently. Once they have found out that it's more difficult to try and cut across three lanes of traffic, that it might be much easier for them to, oh, I don't know, go up Route 59 and/or maybe proceed from southbound 59, so that there isn't a problem when they're approaching the dispensary.
Okay, I think that answers the question.
Right, that point was made, I think, at the Plan Commission meeting, that people, this is a destination business. You're gonna have repeat customers, and they're gonna figure out the safest and most expeditious way to get in and out. Once they find one that they don't like, that doesn't seem safe, they'll look for another, and then they'll return to that. So, a lot of this will be, I guess, taken care of just by usage, but good question. Anything else, Alderman?
Yeah, well, obviously, people are doing it now, because there's businesses in there now. So, somebody's, you know, they're figuring it out. I just kind of, because there might be more traffic, I just wanted to get a little bit of a clarification. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman, anything?
Thank you. Yes, just a couple of questions. I've had some long conversations with people about this, members of the Plan Commission, who gave this a great deal of thought and consideration, and I really appreciate their hard work on reviewing the details of this project. I think it has been mentioned, but I want to emphasize that this was a unanimous recommendation by the Plan Commission, which is certainly something that, as a former member of the Plan Commission myself, carries a lot of weight with me. My first question was whether you had a license. I believe you've answered that already. I'm just sort of amazed, in some sense, that you have a license that can be anywhere in the Chicago Naperville-Elgin region, and that you've decided to build the dispensary here in Warrenville, which came as, was quite a surprise to me that this was going to be in such demand and was going to happen here in Warrenville so quickly. But I think one thing that people have asked me about, and that I haven't heard anywhere in prior presentations or in your materials, has to do with the social justice implications in dispensary licenses. I'm wondering where you stand on that. I'm wondering where you stand on that.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. One of the things I'd like to say is I want to add to what several Aldermen had said about the process here, it's been so thorough. And I've now come to, and you know, I've been through this process in a number of cities in the past, and this, I think, is the absolute most thorough one I've ever been through. Jim and I, I think, owe a couple extra white hairs to that sometimes, but it's been really, the staff has done such an excellent job. There have been such thoughtful questions. There's been such engagement with every aspect of our operation and our plan. I think that says great things about the city and how the city is developing, in thinking about any new developments that come to your community. So I congratulate you on that, and I think that makes us really excited to be here. As for the social equity aspects of the cannabis industry, we actually have faced a lot more questions about that in, as other cannabis companies have. We have done a number of things to address that. One of the things that we did actually is we supported about 25 applications for the dispensary round that just was done this year, that created a social equity component to the grading. So we helped three different groups of social equity entrepreneurs. They were all majority African-American, they were all veteran, and we assisted them in the application process, in putting together all the exhibits for the application, in the legal structuring for their applications. We just provided, I would say, consulting or mentorship through that process for them. And so we spent quite a bit of time on that. We also, once the state announced their social equity requirements, we launched a program to increase the diversity of our staff. I would say in our Chicago location, probably, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I would say roughly 75% of our new hires since January have been from disproportionately impacted areas. Now, disproportionately impacted areas have been defined by the IDFPR, which is the agency that regulates the cannabis industry here in the state. And it's based on a number of measures that includes things like the number of people that have been incarcerated because of cannabis offenses in the population. It includes some economic measures. It includes the number of kids on certain special assistance, et cetera. So they divided up the city and the whole, in specific areas that they found had been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. And so I myself have spent quite a bit of time on this. What we've done is we have made a tremendous effort to recruit our employees from disproportionately impacted areas. One of our sort of more senior corporate employees that we hired this year was from a disproportionately impacted area. And so in addition to supporting new social equity applicants that were looking to get licenses, we also have been trying to apply those principles throughout our own hiring in the company.
Thank you. My only other question, I'm not going to go very long, has to do with parking. My own personal concern, when I first heard about this project, was parking, and I've been listening with great interest to your rope program. So this might be more a question for staff. There was a staff memo from our senior planner about the two different ways in which you could calculate the required parking. And I wondered if staff can talk about that and how they arrived at the parking requirement that they're aiming for with this project, to sort of let us know whether or not this is a concern, because other people in the community have said the same thing to me, that they know there's not just the access issues, but that they're concerned about the amount of parking that a project like this would need, and the lack of across-parking easement with the surrounding properties.
Okay, can we have Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzger answer that, please? Ron?
Yes, thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. From a staff perspective, I would agree that after listening to all the testimony during the public hearing process evaluating this specific proposal at this specific location, that parking was the number one concern that we focused on. We evaluated parking from a variety of perspectives. We first verified that the parking that was being proposed for the project is compliant with the zoning ordinance requirements and did not need a variance. We confirmed that. We also had our traffic engineer evaluate the parking needs for this type of use based on parking generation data produced by the Institute of Traffic Engineers for this type of use. And our traffic engineer concluded that the parking that's supplied on site should be sufficient to meet the needs of this project, provided it's managed properly. So that led us, from a staff perspective, to work with the applicant to implement some conditions or attach some conditions to the staff recommendation and ultimately to the plan commission recommendation that's before you tonight, that will help ensure that the applicant and future operator of this particular business at this location implements a system that controls customer traffic in a manner that minimizes the possibility that there'll be parking problems on the site. When I mean parking problems, I mean, the site will actually have, would be in a situation where there's more demand for parking than there's parking on the property, and therefore people could find another place to park off-site where they're not supposed to be. And that system, as described by the applicant's representative tonight, is the rope system, which does require that any recreation users or recreation cannabis customers register for product pickup, and they identify, they're given a specific time of the day that they can come and pick that up. So the condition that is outlined in the staff report is that they have to adhere to the rope system that's been proposed, and it's a pretty strict system, will help ensure that there's no material parking problems. The way the staff recommendation was structured and the plan commission recommendation to the city council structured is that the applicant would have the ability to come back at some future time and ask for some consideration where maybe some of the rope system restrictions could be relaxed based on how they did during the time up to, how they operated their business up to that point in time. It would also allow the city to assess whether there's any parking problems created. It is our belief generally that as this use operates in the Chicago metropolitan area or throughout the metropolitan area on a more regular basis and a larger number of locations, that the individual parking demand at any specific location will kind of even out and won't see the type of peaks that some other communities are experiencing in this point in time. So there's no guarantee that there won't be parking issues, but I think we've done a pretty, made a pretty concerted effort to design a system of regulations that would do a good job in minimizing the possibility that there'll be any ongoing and material parking problems at this location.
Thank you. And I really want to thank staff for working so hard to come up with a reasonable way to restrict the parking so that there won't be problems. And I really hope that if this goes forward, that there won't be problems because of all the hard work that you've put in. I think it was a difficult situation, and I think that it's very interesting that something that's being implemented because of COVID has turned out to have these sort of ongoing applications and maybe even benefits for a longer term, maybe not forever, but for a longer term. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kuschel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing to add or clarify on the parking. I read in the backup here, can you give me an estimate of, based on the rope plan, the estimated amount of customers per hour that you could serve? I was interested in that number, or per day? Do you have an estimate of that?
So I believe the limitation, and Ron, remind me if I'm, if I'm remembering the exact number, I think it's a limitation of 30 per half an hour. Is that right?
You know, the way the rope system is calculated, the number of customer parking spaces or recreation cannabis customers that would be allowed in any 30-minute period would be a function of the number of employees that are actually working, parking on the site at any given time. So I'll give you an example. So it's not a static formula, it would adjust depending on how many people are on staff at the location at any given time. So there are 29 parking spaces on the property, and if there are 10 staff members, the rope system would limit the maximum number of recreation customers in any 30-minute period to 16 in that scenario.
Okay. That helpful, Alderman?
Yes, it is. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. My first one has to do with, during your presentation, you mentioned that on busy days there'd be an overflow location for the employees, and I wondered if you could expand on that information.
Essentially, we haven't figured it out, but essentially, what we want to do is if we know it's going to be a busy day, for whatever reason, maybe it's 4:20, maybe it's a Saturday and there's a giant concert down the street, whatever the reason, we expect additional traffic, we would arrange to make sure there are no employees parking there. So that could mean, I think the easiest way to do this is probably simply to give employees an Uber credit and say, take an Uber to work, and we'll pay for it. That's the simplest way. Another way would be to arrange off-site parking and provide a shuttle for the employees. Not terribly difficult to do, since you'd only have about 10 employees or so, so you could just fit them in a van and arrange to pay parking somewhere nearby. But honestly, I think the easiest thing would be to simply provide, to simply pay for a ride share, to give them a ride share credit, so they could just take a paid car to work that day.
And then you had also mentioned the security cameras that would be rolling when you were open. Are they monitored in real time, or are they available for review should something happen?
Oh, that's a good question, and something actually I did not present in the presentation in my haste, is we do have a security guard on site during opening hours. And so there is going to be someone who, part of their job description is to be watching the security cameras throughout the day, perhaps not exclusively. Of course, they'll also be doing rounds. If there's a delivery, they might be supervising the delivery, but a great number of the time, they're going to be monitoring the cameras. The state police also has real-time access to the cameras at any time, and so they can check them whenever necessary. I hope that answers your question. There's also, of course, the footage is kept for a certain number of days for review in case there is, there is an incident, but there is also the ability to check in real time.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, does New Era operate a recycling program on the premises?
We have a battery recycling program, if that's the question, you know, like the little vape batteries. Other than that, I would assume it's just a normal recycling program that each city has in place, and so it'll vary a little bit from place to place that we've operated. But I'm not aware of any sort of additional programs beyond that.
So paper that's generated within your facility or aluminum cans or whatever is not collected and separated for recycling purposes?
Yes, as is the normal city recycling program, absolutely. I thought you were referring, perhaps, as you know, there's some devices associated with marijuana consumption, like the vape pen, and so those have to be recycled in a particular way, and so we do collect those as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then there'd be, I guess, the recycling containers that would be wherever your garbage disposal is, that would house the recyclables from the routine garbage?
Yeah, just from routine office user, yeah, absolutely.
And then my final question is, you know, well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate you on the New Era's social equity efforts. I was really impressed by what you're doing, and I just wonder whether you support other local nonprofit groups or charitable causes within the communities that you service?
Yeah, a lot of our support previously has been mostly aimed at veteran groups or groups related to what was our mission for a long time, which is medical needs. And so we've done work sometimes with the, in East Peoria, a lot with the Cancer Society there and that sort of thing. As we come into a new community, we'll develop new relationships, and we're always happy to support and become a part of the community that we join.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
Yeah, my question is, you indicate that you have 29 spaces, parking spaces. Now, is that on your specific building lot, or does that include 4M parking as well?
No, that's in our lot. There isn't currently 29. We are creating an additional, I think, four or five spaces once we remove the old drive-thru.
Okay, so they're not, will be taking from the other area in 4M Parking Plaza there. They will still have one of their parking spots available, right?
That's correct. These are all onsite at the proposed premises.
Okay. Just another question, nothing to do with parking, and that takes care of that. But is there any kind of limit on the number of times a person can buy, can drive in and buy material from you?
There is a state limit on how much you can buy in a certain period of time, but it has to do, not with the number of times you buy, but the total cannabis content. So there's like a maximum number of grams that you can purchase. That is a limit that is different and higher for medical patients than it is for recreational patients, and is lower still for out-of-state visitors.
Okay, good. Thank you for that breakdown, because I just wanted to know, if the same person can keep coming back, call you up, and every 30 minutes come by and pick up something, as long as the quantity is within the limits, there's no number about the times.
There is that number of times. Yeah, but it's, you know, it would have to be, you'd have to be making very small purchases if you're going to be coming all the time and not reach your limit. I don't know, I can't remember off the top of my head what the actual limit is, but it is limited. And I think they, I'm assuming your concern is with resale or something like that. I think that they're looking to address that with the state regulation.
Okay, well, that did enter into it, but your, thank you for that definition. That's good enough for me. Thank you very much, and welcome to Warrenville.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, before we wrap up, just a comment on my part, that I heard you say earlier that of all the committees that you've had to make presentations to, you got the most thorough and rigorous evaluation of your proposal right here in Warrenville. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, by far.
By far.
By far.
Just to let folks know that when stuff comes, we take a close look at it. The plan commission vote was unanimous, and every plan commissioner was there for that vote. That's how we try to do business, and so we hope this goes well for everyone concerned. So thank you for, and having watched your presentation, that plan commission was very thorough. So clearly, you're very careful business people, and I don't anticipate we're going to have any problems should this go through, but we're going to find out pretty soon. Anything else you want to add before we wrap up?
No, I just wanted to thank the city again for all the great questions, and we look forward to doing business here, we look forward to being a part of the community, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Emily, could we go back to our roll call and do the attendance of staff also, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll probably get this figured out about the time, we don't have to do this, maybe. Treasurer Brenner?
Yes.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman?
Present.
City Administrator John Coakley?
Present.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White?
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toronto?
Present.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand?
Present.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzger?
Here.
Deputy Public Work Director Phil Kucler?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. We'll move on now to the part... Thank you, Emily. We'll move on now to the part of our meeting that we set aside for citizens' comments. We'll hear verbal or written comments. We have two citizens this evening attending the meeting, so I would ask them to come to the podium, introduce themselves and give their address and give us their story. We'll begin with Jim Halama and then we'll go to Bob Seibert.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Brummel and City Alderman. My name is James Halama. I reside at 27 West 100 Galusha Avenue, Warrenville. And I'm here tonight to represent the St. Irene Knights of Columbus. And I'm here to promote our annual Intellectual Disabilities Fund Drive, or more affectionately known as our Tootsie Roll Drive. We have, for one weekend in September, every year since 1975, when we first were founded, been out on the Warrenville street corners soliciting donations from the motorists. In return, we'd hand them the Tootsie Roll. Unfortunately, due to the COVID pandemic, we're unable to conduct this drive this year. We've suspended the street corner solicitations. The need, however, is to support the locally-based organizations whose mission is to provide services for individuals with intellectual disabilities continue. We have chosen instead to conduct a virtual GoFundMe Tootsie Roll Drive throughout, and this will be throughout the month of September. Our goal is to raise $10,000 and that equates to previous year's goals in our collections. The organizations that receive support from this fund drive are local. They include the Warrenville Cupertino Group Home, Western DuPage Special Recreation Association, Special Camps for Special Citizens, which is out of Winfield, that conducted here for these citizens, and then the Illinois Knights of Columbus Charities, Inc. All 100% of the funds we receive this year from the GoFundMe will go to support these organizations. As with any crowdfunded source, GoFundMe campaign, to make it successful, we must get the word out promoting the event on social media, emails to individuals, printed flyers, and here at City Hall. So we're out here trying to promote the drive so that we can achieve our goal. We hope that you will consider making a donation. Now, we're relying on social media emails to use any link provided to you in social media to go to the drive and make a donation. Any amount is acceptable. And of course, hopefully, if you haven't received one, you'll receive something in the future. Also, you can, if you have not received anything, I have flyers here, you can actually go to gofundme.com and search for St. Irene Intellectual Disabilities Fund Drive. It should pop up and you should be able to make a donation. So we're making every effort in this community-wide drive by selecting local media resources. So we thank you for your donation.
Thank you, Jim.
I would like to add just one other thing. Knights of Columbus, we also sponsor community blood drives. And so this is just a flyer put out on Saturday, September 26th. There will be a blood drive at St. Irene's Church or at the Parish Activity Center.
Great, thank you. Don't forget your bucket.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. I've talked to you about the 94-year-old house in TIFF 3 that was in TIFF 2, generated over $12,000. And now in TIFF 3, will probably, at the extent of TIFF 3, generate over $15,000. And yet, there's been no changes in the structure, painting on the house. The interesting point is that with TIFF districts, it is not the property that pays the money. The money is determined by the owner. And we can do this with this house, there's a $514 TIFF payment in 2020. However, if John Cokely would purchase this house, the TIFF revenue would increase by $706, going to a total of $1,220 generated same year. If John then decided to rent the house, the TIFF district would then receive an additional $460, raising the total to $1,685, as opposed to the $514. The situation has always been that the TIFF is an overlay of the property tax system, and the changes in the property tax system affects the revenue. This individual has been in the house for 60 years and is over 80 years old. Yet he's paying this amount of additional taxes. The city of Warrenville should be more transparent. First, identifying the residential properties that have no relationship to economic development in TIFF 3, as was in TIFF 2. There are many residential properties that have no economic development plan and are simply generating revenue through hardship to the city. Next, establish the monetary flows from these residential properties. Next, establish the monetary flows from economic-developed property. Next, identify the total amount of funds that have been transferred to TIFF 3, going back to 2006. Identify the revenue from economic-developed properties and the scheduled repayment, if this is sufficient. Also, inform the citizens that they will be responsible to pay for the Fire District and the Park District's services for new residents moving into new apartment buildings and new homes in TIFF 3 until the end of the TIFF. Repeat the above steps for TIFF 4. It is important to note that in the world of economics, this 90-year-old house is not economic development, but simply a hidden tax on all taxpayers. You should always remember that taxpayers' lives matter too.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any email comments this evening? We do not. Any callers who wish to make comments at this time, please identify yourself and state your comment. Okay, once we conclude, the citizens' comment portion of our meeting, there will not be another opportunity for the public to comment. So I'm closing that at this point, not hearing from anyone. We'll move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. A couple of things this evening. A reminder that the Census 2020 effort ends September 30th. That's not too far off. It's the last day to respond to the 2020 census. Enumerators have been knocking on doors since early August to reach out to those families that have not yet self-responded. You can still complete the census at www.my2020census.gov or by calling 1-844-330-2020. Approximately 17% of Warrenville residents are still not counted. So we have a ways to go. Pretty good start. We've got a couple of weeks to finish up. More than $675 billion in federal funding is distributed every year based on census numbers. An undercount could cost a community millions of dollars in funding over the next 10 years. So please keep that in mind. Do your part. Let us know that you're there. That's very important. Also, a reminder about COVID-19. Continue to follow the safety guidelines for the prevention and spread of COVID-19 by the usual things, wearing a mask in public, washing your hands and social distancing. The virus has not gone away. It's still out there. It's still very vigorous in its attempt to infect everyone. So please keep that in mind and be thoughtful of your neighbors and your family. And those of you who are in attendance at the meeting, you can get out at the end of the meeting with the emergency doors if you prefer, rather than going through City Hall. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
Chief.
Oh, Chief Toronto, I'm sorry. We did have an announcement. Good thing there's more than one person. Concerning the cancellation of National Night Out. My apologies, Chief. Are you still there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Regretfully, we are going to be canceling National Night Out for 2020. This is due to the restrictions of the Governor's executive order in that there is no way that we could limit this to 50 individuals or comply with the social distancing guidelines. Last year, I believe, we drew over 1,700 people. It's a wonderful community event and there is nobody that is sorrier to see this not take places here than us. It's just one of those things, like many other communities, and we've surveyed quite a few in the local area, and they are also canceling the event. So again, I apologize. We are just sorry, as you are, that it's not going to take place this year. But, you know, stay tuned. We're going to have a bigger and better event next year in 2021. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, that will be missed. One of our signature events that evolved over the last few years into one of the best things that we do all year round. So we will miss it and commit to an even better one next year. Okay, now Clerk. You maybe wait all that time for nothing?
I will, I will. You just made me think. The end of the season is here. We just made the executive decision to take down the flower baskets and the bridge planters. They are starting to fade and rather than look at them, get really bad. We're going to stop watering them and take them down. So see you next year. Hope you enjoyed them this year.
They have looked beautiful. It's been very, very nice. Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
I'll report.
Thank you. We'll go to the Alderman. If anyone has any comments tonight, Alderman Ashauer?
I'd just like to thank the Police Department and the other responding departments for the safe resolution of the incident at Winfield and Butterfield Road. That could have been completely different. So thank you very much.
Well said, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Berry?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman. Davalos?
No comment tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
I have one question, which is that I'm aware of the fact that the National Night Out is canceled, the Fourth of July has been canceled, a lot of the events have been canceled. But my understanding is that the Park District is going ahead with the Art of the Prairie Festival. And since that's taking place on city property, my concern is what procedure they will have in place to ensure that we're following the governor's restrictions for COVID-19 social distancing guidelines. So if staff could get back to me on that, you know, I want to be sure that we're following the law on city property and with an event that's funded with city money.
Okay. Yep, I'm assuming that they have checked with us, John?
Yes. In fact, I just spoke with Executive Director Tim Reinbold last, someday last week. It seems like a long time ago with the holiday in the past. They are, they haven't published all the, so the guidelines are going to have yet, partly because they've been evolving since their planning's been going on. They are, I am aware, they are doing greater distance between the booths. They will remind people that they should wear masks since they socially distance. And I know the person that is running it is very role-focused. And I believe that Ms. Breckman will do a very good job, along with all the other Park District staff. I can ask them to provide more information. I had checked their Facebook page. If you really dig into it, it does have comments about it, but it wasn't posted on the main event flyer. It is in the city newsletter with their event information. It's just a general statement about all the current requirements will be followed. But Alderman, we can ask for that information to be shared and I'll do that in the morning. Ask the Park District to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Alderman?
No, just everybody should watch your distance, wash your hands, wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say some words of encouragement. Any parents of school-aged children, I know this is a difficult time. I assure you, you're not the only one that's tired and stressed out and trying to figure this all out. So, you know, we'll get through this together. It's, you know, I know myself included. So stick it out. We'll get through this.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Nothing to add tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
All right, we'll move on then to City Administrator. Anything tonight, John?
Thank you. Just a quick comment, follow-up on the mayor and Alderman Goodman's comments about COVID-19 issues. Just a reminder, the DuPage County Health Department has an excellent website. I'll dedicate you to that, the dashboard. I'm on there daily checking our stats and that of the county. Anybody has any questions about what's going on? They can also answer questions. Give them a little time. They're very, very, very busy right now. But there is excellent information, all very visual, visual, excuse me, right on the dashboard. And then if you want more information, they have links for the state and additional information. So I think, I believe they're doing an excellent job. And along with my fellow managers, we give them kudos all the time for all the great job, all the excellent work that they're doing and leading us in this pandemic. Thank you.
We are absolutely blessed in DuPage County on many levels. Thank you, John. City Attorney Brooke?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, do you wish to do that?
I move to approve the agenda for the September 8, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Motion and a second. Any changes to the agenda? Speak up, identify yourself, please.
Alderman Ashauer, I'd like to remove 6A.
Okay.
Or have some.
Motion.
Motioner and seconder agree to that change to the agenda? Okay, very good. So we have an agenda that has been changed by removing one item. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Kreschel?
Hi.
Alderman Wilson?
Hi.
Alderman Bavir?
Hi.
Alderman Berry?
Hi.
Alderman Goodman?
Hi.
Alderman Davalos?
Hi.
Alderman Widener?
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer?
Hi.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been approved as amended. We have one set of minutes that need approval this evening. Also, Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes of the August 17, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Motion, man, a second. Any discussion? Speak up, identify yourself, please. During none, may I have a roll call again, please? Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman? Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda has amended. Item 6B accepts staff recommendation, wave second reading, and pass ordinance 02020-33, decreasing the number of Class A2 liquor licenses. C accepts Mayor Bremmell's recommendation and passed resolution R2020-53, extending the duration of the March 16, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. D accepts staff recommendation and passed resolution R2020-54, Designating Freedom of Information Act officers for the city of Warrenville. E accept, receive, and file minutes of the Police Pension Board Regular Meeting held on April 20, 2020. F receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on June 9, 2020. G receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on August 20, 2020. H receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting held on July 16, 2020. I receive and file report of invoices paid up to September 2, 2020, in the amount of And J authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before September 21, 2020, in the amount of $104,542.02. Two cents. It's about the same. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as read?
I move to approve the agenda as read.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry? Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
The consent agenda as amended has been approved. We will return to item 6A. I believe Alderman Ashauer asked someone else to make that motion, so would someone like to make the motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Plan Commission Recommendation, wave second reading, and pass ordinance 02020-32, approving a special unit permit for the NewMed Adult Use Cannabis Dispensary at 4S120 North Illinois Route 59.
Second. I think that was Alderman Davalos?
I, I think it was Alderman Kreschel.
Okay. All right. We stand.
Can I ask a question? Should it say NewMed if their name has changed in the motion?
I can clarify.
Oh, I'm sorry.
City Assistant Administrator White?
I thought she was going to answer that. I'm sorry, this is, this is City Attorney Brooke Lenaman. The new era name is a Doing Business As name. It's just a new registered name, so they're still structured under NewMed. So the ordinance reflects that, and I think the motion is sufficient, as is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, so we're good to go with the motion as presented. As always, we'll have opportunity to speak on this motion. We'll go through our list of aldermen. Alderman Ashauer, you're first.
No comment.
Okay, Alderman Berry?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos?
No comment at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman?
I think I've covered it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Kreschel?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Widener?
No comment.
And Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
Thank you all. Time for a roll call then, please. Emily? Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Nay.
Motion carries. Welcome to Warrenville.
Thank you so much.
We'll go on to item, the first item in our regular agenda. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
Motion to accept the staff recommendation and approve revisions to the temporary amendment to the hotel tax grant policy, extending reimbursement of expenses through December 31, 2024, for events impacted by COVID-19.
Second, Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. Would someone like to speak to this before we have comments? Assistant City Administrator White?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in May, the City Council approved an amendment to the hotel tax grant policy that was temporary through July 31st, allowing for expenses to be reimbursed for tax grant recipients under the Hotel Tax Grant Program for events that had to be amended or modified or canceled because of COVID-19. At that time, we did not know how much longer COVID was going to be around or what the, when it would end, so that the policy was written in a way to essentially end on July 31st unless the council took action to extend it. We do have applicants who have programs that go beyond July 31st this year. For example, the library's concerts on the Commons, which usually go through August, and had to be canceled because they could not have in-person concert event series, but they still had expenses and contracts that they had previously signed with the, the bands and the talent that they bring in for those concerts. So we are requesting that the council extend the amendment, allowing for those reimbursements through the end of the calendar year, December 31 of 2020, for those programs for previously approved expenses that could not be avoided for amended or canceled events.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the aldermen then, or comments or questions. Alderman Ashauer?
Can you tell me how, how much has been refunded to, by request?
That is a great question. I don't have the total in front of me. If I was going to guess, based on the ones I remember processing at this point, we probably probably right around the 60 or so thousand-dollar mark, but I can ask our finance department to pull the total and provide that in the upcoming weekly report for the council.
I'd, I'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman?
Just one brief question about the change here isn't just to move up from July 31st to December 31st, but there's also a change saying the expenses have to be incurred prior to May 31st instead of April 30th. I'm just wondering why that was also changed.
Sure. The initial policy amendment, again, we thought that at that time COVID was still very new, and the idea of making it the April 30th deadline was that the group shouldn't be incurring new expenses. But obviously, at that point in time, we still didn't know that this was going to go on through the, through the summer and through the end of the calendar year, so groups were taking a wait-and-see sort of attitude and trying to plan with the hopes that they would be able to have their events. That changed probably closer to June, July is when we really started to realize that it's unlikely that there was going to be any in-person events at all this summer and going into the fall. So we extended that date into the, into the end of May, because most of the groups at this point would have started planning at that point in time and incurring those costs.
Right, but this is August, so they couldn't have known in May that they, we would change it in August from April to May. So should it, should we change it to August? Have they, have they been incurring expenses all this while?
No, the, so the May date is representative of when they would have committed to the expenses. So we don't, we, the groups shouldn't have been committing to expenses, new expenses, going into June and July, knowing that COVID was ongoing, but they would have likely still been thinking in May that there might have been a chance that they could have had their events, which is why we extended it 30 days, because the way the grant program is written, they are supposed to wait until the beginning of the fiscal year before they start contracting or using expenses towards the grant program.
Okay, so does this cover, like, known expenses that particular grantees did do in May and we already know about? Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Widener?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and Alderman Wilson?
Just a question. In the August meeting we had, it was reported that the hotel tax had been decreased by some 75% for this year. Could we have an update on that? Are we getting more in or less than for the remainder of this fiscal year, at least what we anticipate?
City Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. We will have a full update, including the hotel fund, at the next City Council meeting. That's not quite ready yet. We're doing it at the second meeting each month, so we'll be getting that to you, unless you have some questions before you want to vote on this. We could have Kevin take a stab at it, but we don't have the final numbers, but we'll be presenting the comprehensive update as we have at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, John.
Okay. I believe that's everyone. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have nothing under unfinished business for this evening, nothing under new business as well. We do not have the need for a closed session, so I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Alderman Goodman, I move to adjourn.
Alderman Ashauer, second.
Motion in a second, and for our final roll call of the evening, Emily? Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attention this evening. Please stay safe and stay healthy.
Night, everyone.